Supposed to be to the left of the side.
There's a stage, podium. Isn't that a stage or a podium?
Podium.
Podium, it's behind the speaker on the right, and on the stage it's on the right.
It's always on the end. The person standing at us, it's always on the end somewhere.
So that would make sense.
Alright, so we have the reading of the minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at minutes from the last meeting. So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Dave moves, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the presentation of the bills.
Moved to approve.
All most approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Carry. Next item is October disconnects. Do I have a motion to approve the October disconnects?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Paul, or moved by Dave, second by Paul. Was there any other discussion? Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Next item is City Commissioners Report. I'll do it different, I'll start first. The beautification met last Monday, and that process is moving forward. We did have one board member resign, because they're moving outside of town, so we'll be looking for another resident for that commission, for the beautification commission. I think we mentioned that at the last meeting. We're working with JR on updating the policy of procedures that we have in place for the notification process, for the possible violations to our junk and trash ordinance. So JR just looked at that, and we forwarded on, and we'll keep working on that process. On the railroad park project, they approved to have the group apply for grant through the community foundation for the fence part of it. And I hope all of you seen the updated quote, that it wasn't seventy thousand, it was twenty-six thousand. So, it'll be a little bit more than that for the fence. I think when I said the seventy, it was another fence that we had booked out. And JR is working with BNSF lawyers to get the agreement to where we need that to be.
What did you say, we got about the grant for the fence?
We're gonna apply for a grant through the community foundation to help pay for that. To look at helping for that fence. And then, we're also gonna look at for some other grants to help with that also.
You said the quote was twenty-six thousand?
Something to that effect.
That kinda changes every meeting. I was thinking it was in the thirties or something, isn't it?
I thought it was forty thousand.
Thirty, forty, or something? You have too many quotes in your hand here.
I do.
Forty, yeah, I saw.
That's a requirement of BNSF.
So what's that gonna be looking at, to get some grants, what's that cost gonna be looking at?
That's what I'll pull up here, just one sec. I'll have it here. Twenty-six thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars.
How many feet?
That is for four hundred and twenty linear feet at six foot high vinyl.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six thousand eight fifty-six. This is what it is right there.
Can I apologize, what was the grant you're filing for?
The Hillsborough Community Foundation.
Okay, but for the full, this full amount?
Probably wouldn't get the full amount, but we'll get part of, hopefully, part of that. I think we're gonna ask for ten, and we'll see what we get.
Why do we need a fence now, after all these years? What's the reason?
It's a requirement of the railroad for the actual agreement.
Safety.
Safety.
Basically.
Saying that there're gonna be people in the area, they wanna make sure that nobody's gonna be crossing over back and forth into it.
And a six-foot fence will do that?
Yep. We had looked at other quotes earlier on, that's maybe where the forty thousand came from, but the last one was this twenty-six thousand. And like I said, it may be a little bit more, based on, we may have to add a couple places. And if Paul really needs a gate, apparently, to walk through back and forth.
Escape hatch.
That is a requirement, like I said, we're trying to find, to make sure that we can get it covered without finding any funds. Whether we'll do fundraising, or other things, but.
Does that fence go all the way around, or does it just go to the backside of the railroad?
The railroad requires that it be on the backside. What we had talked about was to have the ends also just to the street. That way, if we did a street dance, or you did anything, it'd be a lot easier to block off.
And that's just out here?
Just out here, yep.
Is, I see it says a white vinyl. Can't you get a cheaper fence, more of a chain link? I mean, the light, is there a difference in what kind you get?
Materials.
I don't think it matters, they just require a six-foot fence. This was at the request earlier on, when we talked about at the beautification, what we thought would look good to make the park area.
That's true.
Where it's, nothing's finalized as what we're doing out there, but this is a requirement that was needed for the, to get the lease agreement with BNSF. So this is what we got, to make sure that it was in. We're still working with them to see if we have to have a licensed contractor and do those type of things, or if we're able to do some of that work ourselves, which would help bring the cost down.
Are you gonna be looking at a bid for a chain link as well? Because I know firsthand of that fence, how expensive it is to do. I just booked one up, just fifty-six feet, and it was over three thousand dollars.
Well, we can look at that, but I think once we get the lease finalized, and see what others in public are saying, what we wanna do, and move forward. This was put together to make sure that we had it covered for the lease agreement. So once everything's finalized, then the beautification will make a final determination, and then come to the city commission for the final approval, and which direction we're gonna go. So that, nothing's concrete yet, this is just the one bit that we got to, like I said, to make sure that we had it for the grant, or for the, for BNSF.
Also, I should remind the crowd, if we're gonna talk, we should come up to the podium. Because we've had people asking, what are the people in the crowd saying, and they're not hearing it, so.
The only reason I haven't come up, it's like I told you, I just had back surgery twice.
Okay, well.
So I mean, I know the protocol, I know what you want.
Okay, I'm just relaying what people say.
So it's the first meeting I've been to.
And that's the only reason.
That's right.
Okay, well, that's, okay, end of subject.
Maybe we can repeat his question, or something?
On the financial portfolio, we'll talk about that more in detail as we get down farther. And then, the last thing that I was going to bring up on, personally, I think Julie has a recommendation, since Ashley's not here tonight. They did find a temporary employee that they're gonna recommend, which would be, oh, I didn't say who it was.
They were looking at Candy Monroe, at fifteen fifty an hour, for when I go off medically.
So there was four applications, they interviewed two of them. And that was the one that they felt was qualified, and would be at that pay rate that we started at. I know that we said next week, or the first of November, but I think if we can get him in next week before Julie's out, would be good to have him in before.
Yeah, that's what they were wondering, if that would be possible.
What's that date? What's the date to start?
What's the date?
Date you want on the table?
So that'd be the twenty-fourth. So do I have a motion to approve Candy Monroe, starting on the twenty-fourth?
I'll make the motion.
Dave makes the motion.
Second.
Mike, seconds, is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. Alright, Paul, you're up next.
Okay, on the electrical side, for the most part, the electrical wiring under the interstate, from the substation, for the most part, is complete, correct him? We have our MRES area meeting on the twenty-seventh of October in Northwood. And I know me and Jim are going, I don't know if Ashley's going or not. And we're gonna, also, we're gonna be kinda touching on different ideas as far as for helping the three communities that are in this area, the three members, as far as helping with maintenance. Just gonna start the conversation, on if there's anything we can do to work together. And we've been kicking around ideas about, you know, linemen, and all the other, all kinds of different ideas. We're just gonna kinda get the three communities, hopefully, we can get them together, and just visit, start the conversation. Nothing is concrete, but we're just gonna start that conversation, and maybe something will come out of it, maybe something will not come out of it. We have the MEI, the load study, is still ongoing. Jim is gonna reach out on when they think they might be completing that. And you'll also, you'll start to be seeing, and Jim can correct me, that Allegiant Utility Services will be coming out with letters to replace the load control in these homes. So, if you're starting to see letters from Allegiant Utility Services, that's what it's for, and we do know about it here. The Bright Energy School Education Program, that's on the agenda. We'll talk about that more when that, when that time comes. That's a good program. And then, on the beautification, on HEDC, they have a meeting on October twenty-fourth. Hope to get an update on some of the new grant, they're talking about some new grant or loan opportunities for businesses, and other things, so hopefully, we'll have more for the next meeting, and what they've come up with. And hopefully, I think, Levi, I can maybe clarify this, I think they're getting close to decisions on the, on the public space initiative grants. Isn't that coming pretty soon?
It was supposed to come out on the fifteenth, which was Saturday, but I haven't heard anything at this point.
Okay. And that would help with a lot of our, if we did get it, if we were fortunate enough to get it, that would help with a lot of our, you know, what we might plan on doing with the railroad park, or any, any park area in the city. It's kind of a strategic planning, to help you with that. But other than that, that's all I believe I have, thank you.
Nicole, do you have anything? Mike?
Nothing.
What I have is Jim, the black topping and everything, looks pretty good around town. Mark Forrest's spot, that's gonna be blacked out.
That's all in Osford's course.
Okay.
I heard they were coming. I heard they were coming this week, so hopefully that'll happen.
Okay, thank you.
About the garbage, Daniel, want me to mention that, or you talked about, about the dumpsters?
Oh, okay. Me and Paul had a conversation today about, there's dumpsters being left just out on the curb, and out on the street, it's not a, I don't think it's a big problem, but we've heard a few complaints about it, that they're just basically sitting there, and we're just wondering if we could maybe just remind.
Encourage.
Encourage the residents that when garbage and recycling there are done, just roll your dumpster back up, and everything will go fine.
It's just more of a, I think, that's all it is, really, is just encouraging people to, you know, get your dumpster pulled up. We have a beautiful town, you know, there's nothing worse than having a dumpster out by the curb, and then wind blows it over, and we got garbage blowing all over, so if you can pull them up to your house, it'd sure be appreciated by the rest of the residents of Hillsborough, just because it is, it makes your community looks kinda tacky when you drive down the street, and they got dumpster. I understand when, on days there's garbage, you can't do it, but when they've been picked up, if people could take the time to pull them back up to their house, it would be appreciated. Might just be an oversight, so.
Helps out the snowplow operators, and the street sweepers, too. They, they don't have to go around them, they got enough to go around without having a dumpster, but, yeah. Just makes the town look a little better, like Paul said.
Jim, do you have anything?
Just, we've been trying to get all the underground stuff done before winter, they're helping in the substation, is finalizing that.
JR, do you have anything?
Nothing for me.
Julie, do you have anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay, do you have anything from the Sheriff's Department tonight?
No, sir.
Alright.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, yeah. Nothing on the city engineer side at this point. On the beautification side, we're kind of in a holding pattern at this point. So no changes on that. Alright, we'll go on to old business. I've pretty much covered the railroad park in my portion, so unless anybody else has anything else on railroad park. FEMA disaster relief, Ashley's not here, but her and I talked a little bit on it. So, the last day to put anything in is coming up here pretty soon. So then, that'll be closed, we're still working on the bridge part of it, but that's not in there. They said that's gonna be state funding, so we have to figure that out.
The way I heard from Cory today was that the trees that are gonna be removed, he's getting a quote for Ashley.
Okay.
So she can put it in that, in that view where he worked.
But if anything is wrong with the bridge, apparently, that'd be another.
He hasn't got, I also talked to him about that, he has not got the current inspection back yet, so.
But the guy from FEMA said that the bridge would not be covered under the FEMA, it would have to be covered under the state or DOT grant, is the way that he was, she was told. So we gotta make sure that is correct. So we gotta, we gotta find out from the district engineer, if that's the case.
I understand.
Anything else, or any other questions on that? Because we'll probably be putting, taking that off the agenda until after the first of the year. So there won't be any updates on that, till we get everything put together. Just so I don't forget, let's do the second reading of, we'll skip down to D, and do the second reading of electrical rate ordinance, five thirty-one. That is to allow us to change it without doing the ordinance, it'd be through a.
Resolution.
Resolution. So I have a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance, five thirty-one. So moved, Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, is there any other discussion on ordinance five thirty-one? If not, Mike?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Alright, so we'll go back to item C, which would be our fiscal responsibility initiative that I had handed out to you guys last week, or last meeting. To give you a little bit more that we've dug into it, a little farther, it looks like the five hundred thousand that we were, went down in, our sewer department came from the improvements we made over on Second Street. That was around three hundred thousand that brought that down, and that would've been when we fixed the valley gutter and the, and the storm drain over by Kiwanis Housing. We're not fully, we're not fully ready to say where we need to do the transfers yet, but if you looked at that again, there is that hundred thousand that we do have in the infrastructure, our city debt retirement, there's about a million dollars in there currently, as of nine thirty. So we can use some of that to offset some of these costs, to help bring some of these funds back. So we'll have more transfers once Ashley and I can sit down a little bit farther, and get that determined. We also have to look at, on the general side, we're not transferring out to each of the utilities. The insurance, federal income tax, state income tax, all of those are not coming out of each utility. Is that correct, Julie? They all come out of the general fund, we haven't transferred back and forth, so. And, yep, and insurance is the other one, so we'll have to look at those. Paul was doing some more checking on the generation fund on that, what we can and can't do with that funds. Because there is some, and I think there's three hundred and twenty-four thousand in there right now, and we get about seventeen thousand a month, I believe it is. We're pretty close.
For where?
For the generator.
Oh, I remember, yes. Fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighty is what it is now.
Okay, fifteen thousand. Some other things that I would, more thinking about this, on the capital project, the equipment funds, we should be making sure that we are setting things aside every year for that, to make sure that we are having some of that, which we have talked about before. So does anybody have any more thoughts, after reading that a little bit farther, on what we should, shouldn't do?
Just curious as when you think that they'll have that update, to get those transfers done, so the numbers are.
My goal is the first of the year. Or before, not the first of the year, it's just, by the first of the year, so that it's done by the end of this year. On the utilities, I know that we will have to go up some, let me pull that up on this, so everybody can see it. So I did work at, and you can see in there, trying to figure out what everybody was at, around our area, to hopefully, so that we're not just taking a stab at the dark here, that we have some concrete numbers for everybody to see. And as you can see, based on, this is not heat included. And not every city that I got all the information from, but we are, overall, if you look at a two hundred thousand dollar home, and a common household for that same size, your average utility and taxes would be about three hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents in Cavalier, and about three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and nine cents here in Hillsborough. So that adds, communities that are similar of size to us, we are fairly reasonable compared to others. We go up to Thompson, you're looking at four hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety cents a month. If we go to Mayville, they're look, according to their numbers, they're about five hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-two cents a month. I didn't wanna just say we should raise rates, or do anything, without saying that this is where we're at. So hopefully, this can help everybody. Our current rates are, electrical at sixteen dollars a month for hookup, eighty-two cents a kilowatt. Non-resident or commercials, forty-two dollars hookup, and seventy-five cents a kilowatt. And then off-peak, if they have it, is, are not eighty-two cents, eight point two cents. And seven point five cents, and off-peak is five point five. Sewer, we're at seven point five for the first nine hundred cubic feet, and then it's one cent for every cubic foot after that. And then, if, without water meters, it's thirteen. Water is a forty dollars, and then three dollars per cubic foot. I think on the website, it is two fifty, but we actually are charging three dollars. And then sixty dollars for flat fee. Garbage is for eighteen for, per container. Recycling's five-ten, and mosquito's at fifty cents.
It's eighteen seventy-five, that's one quarter. That dropped, when we went citywide on the recycling.
That's what was on the website.
Levi, can I point something out?
Yeah.
Just, just to put a promotion in there for our electric utilities, if you look in electric rate, you'll notice the four lowest rates are all Missouri River Energy Service members.
Yep, we are Cavaliers, that is the, they're a little bit higher than us, they're at eight point five cents. We're at eight point two cents. Valley City's at seven point four.
We're all under, actually, under ninety-nine, nine cents, and everybody else is ten, eleven cents, so. There's a benefit there.
There is, we are one of the cheapest water, also. Like, the only place that was cheaper than us was Mapleton. And, but they have a higher wastewater, so I don't know. And we are the cheapest wastewater. And all these numbers on the water and wastewater came out of the A2S study that he gave us a little while ago, and then I put together the rest, looking at different sources. So we do know that we have to bring up our water and sewer to pay off that USDA loan. We will have to come up at least two dollars for that per month.
On the electrical side, too, we might, depending upon what we come up with for next year, and projects that we may need to be done as far as maintenance, we wanna take that off the table, that might have to be bumped a little bit. Once we get all of our numbers straightened out, so we know where we're at, then a lot of electrical this year, so, you know, it'd be mainly a lot of maintenance for next year, if we do any. I don't know if Jim can elaborate on that more, but I think we have to at least maybe think about it, and not take it completely off the table.
Right. I just wanna make sure when we raise rates, that we do it as responsibly as we can. I know what's gonna, we're going to have to at some point. One of the options I did look at, that we could do, if you wanted to, is we could take out a loan for fifteen years, at about eight hundred and, or seven hundred and fifty thousand, which would help pay that electrical infrastructure that we're working on right now, plus to pay off that deficit that is in the sewer, if we went that route. If we went that route and we could get a loan for seven hundred and fifty thousand from the Bank of North Dakota through their infrastructure loan, it's, interest rate is at two percent, but it would probably be closer to two point five with all the fees and everything else on there. If you did it for fifteen years, we'd have to look at raising about at six hundred hookups. This was just an average, we'd have to look at raising our rates about twelve dollars a month.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? First time.
Do you want to come up to the mic if you can?
Oh, oh, I just wanted to know what the county, were highest with Mayville on the county, what does that mean?
Oh, on the, that'd be that all of the county property taxes. So they may have different, um.
It's the same.
No, it would, the county is the same, but then you have to remember there's also other taxes that would be involved on the county side that they levy for such, uh, that we may not be doing here. I'm trying to remember what they might have different than us. The city of Mayville might have, um, different rates on soil conservation, that, that's, that's not the case, but, um, the county tax is the same from the county, but there's other things that are charged through the county that would be different. For example, on the city side, we levy for the rec district, we also levy for the airport and for the park board. So the number on ours is not just the city, it's city, park and anything that's related, same thing with the county, it's county and related taxes based on that city. So that's why it is a little bit different.
Levi?
Yep.
Um, this is comparing to electrical. But I, how about the cost of being business as a city? How do we compare with them and how do our taxes compare? This is just one, one thing that we're looking at here.
Nope, this is everything, this is.
I'm electrical up here, right?
Nope, that is, so the first column is the city, the to, the second column is the total cost per month for all utilities except for heat and taxes. So if you looked at Hillsborough, it's three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and nine cents, Mayville's five fourteen. We pay a hundred and ninety-one dollars and eight cents for utilities. In comparison, Mayville's at two hundred and fifty cent, two hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-three cents for utilities. So it is all broke out on there, Rick, it has everything. I don't know if I can zoom in anymore. Also, yeah.
Well, when you talk about, um, raising utilities, I was talking to a couple other places in town and my, that's been my question too, is at the last meeting. I remember years ago when we had over a million dollars in, in electrical. And my question is, you're gonna raise rates, but when are we gonna quit using that electrical portfolio as a piggyback to fund everything else? There's a lot of money that's spent without accountability. Is that something that you're very interested in, Levi?
That is something that I'm extremely interested in, one of the things that's taking the process of being so long to figure it out where we're at is we haven't been, for example, looking at everything. You know, I'll use this building, or I'll use City Hall, or, or any of our city buildings, we're not accounting for water, sewer, electrical, in, in one of those buildings. So on the electrical side, we're not seeing what it costs for the armory to pay for electricity, or what it costs for this. Granted, it's still gonna go, come out the same fund, but we're not seeing a true picture of what's going on. And so that's hard. The raise that we did raise last month for property taxes, that fifty thousand, that was the start of we took fifty thousand less transfer out of utilities for next year. That was going to go to the general fund, so that's why the property taxes went up total. Last year we levied, I think, I can't remember the numbers, but we went up about fifty thousand dollars total from last year to help offset some of that, so we're not taking that money out of there, out of the electrical, it's gonna come out of the taxes. And it's gonna take a long time for us to get back on, to figure it out.
We have, we have to remember too, we've been working, we've been working on similar numbers that you've had for the last how many years? And everybody knows what everything costs the last year. You know, you know, you look at this electrical, I'm sure Jim could testify to, the, the cost of things. And we can't keep doing improvements when costs are going just through the roof. If we're gonna keep doing improvements and just doing regular maintenance, it's only, how do we pay for it if we don't, if we can't generate, I don't want any higher rates than anybody else, but I do want, make sure I, when I flip the switch on half electricity and when I turn the water spock on, sp, spick it on, I got water. You know, and, and we can't control, if you could buy a transformer, I'm just throwing a number out for ten thousand last year, now we're paying twenty thousand for it. You know, we can't, you know, but we have to, but we also have to figure out, okay, how are we, we, we need these items, how are we gonna pay for them going forward? And that's, and that's the dilemma that I see. I don't know if any other commissioners see, but that's the problem I look at is if we don't somehow figure out to get more revenue coming in, how are we gonna, how are we gonna keep doing these maintenance items and the things we have to do to keep our city nice? That, that's, that's my concern, is if we don't, cause if we don't have the, if we don't have the funds, you know, we're just gonna let everything just fall, we don't want to let things fall apart, so.
Wait, if you come up to the mic.
Daryl Osborne, Hillsborough, twenty-five years, twenty-two years here. Uh, on the electric and everything, there's more to it, okay, like, um, my home, I have three sources of heating. Uh, I have a pot belly stove that burns wood. I have a, uh, a fuel oil furnace that, that, uh, burns fuel oil and then the, the electricity. My neighbor, all, all theirs is, is all electric based heating boards and everything in the winter. So their pri, their rates go up high and higher and higher. So all the rates are, have to be in, you know, an, an, an average of, you know, people that have multiple, uh, you know, sources of heating, you know, like, like I, I, I use my fuel oil, I pay for my fuel oil. Uh, you know, I just, with, uh, the increases this year, uh, heating oil is predicted to go up twenty-seven percent this year. So that's less in, in, you know, for us for the pay that, the, the other things. But I gotta decide, you know, when am I gonna give up this year, you know? Um, you know, uh, so far in the town, it, it's hurt the town, you know, I used to, to, uh, go around and, uh, do all the businesses around here, you know, get, spread a little, you know, around here and a little around here for the business, for the business community. Now I'm down to, uh, you know, not even supporting the town anymore as far as businesses. You know, cause it's gotten too expensive. But, uh, you know, my original point is, you know, with people that have multiple sources that are not using all the electricity that you say, you know, how can we be at a hundred and ninety-one dollars? You know, we're, we're not using that much electricity. And then my second, well, you know, point I'm gonna bring up right now, uh, was you discussed something about taking out a, a loan. We shouldn't be putting about, out more money, uh, you know, on loans and everything. Well, you know, it's just taken away, uh, from, from us, you know, it, it's a deficit. We gotta pay that loan back, even if, if it's a good loan at two point five percent. You still got that money and everything going out on, on these, uh, you know, uh, new projects or old projects, just like that, uh, a hundred and fifty-four thousands dollars to, uh, uh, make a model of, of the streets here and the, the piping system coming out of the sewage fund and everything. We, we can't be spending money we don't have, we gotta start to be more fiscal responsible, you know, more, uh, you know, tighten our belts. So, that's all I have to say.
Just for clarification on the electrical, what you would see on here does not include heat. This is based on a normal home using X amount of electricity every month.
It's an average, right?
On average.
It's an average.
Yep.
Levi?
Yes, Rick.
Paul, I understand your comments about the cost of things going up. Being in business where it was for thirty-some years, I see that happen all the time. But you know, when, when things happen like that, yeah, maybe just my point, my point is when things are going up, I, I know, I understand that, but my point is, is like this gentleman is you can't just say, well, we're gonna do something and we gotta tighten up our belts, that's all I'm saying. I understand if you, if something's going up a double or forty percent or what have you. But I'm just encouraging you all of you, and I'm sure you are, is to really take a good look before you spend any money on anything. Make sure you ha, I know you have to, you have to stay in line and have the things you need. But I, I think the community's the same way and I was over at, uh, I guess I don't want to say their name, but I was at a business this week talking to a, an individual, I talked to Levi about it. And he said, was talking about the swimming pool, he said, we didn't, couldn't get it open. But yet, he said, we're heating the pool down here for a few people to go down there and swim in. Well, he said, what does that cost? I said, I don't know, I didn't even know they heated the pool, so I, it was creeped to me. Are any of you aware that that's going on, they were heating the pool, yet we don't, can't get it open? And how are we even gonna have a pool next year? You know, that's a, that's an expense, I mean, that's all the different things you could be looking at, is it physically cost effective to run that, heat, heat that pool, I don't know. Jim, you got any idea what it costs? I mean, do you, I mean, would you have an idea? I, I know it wouldn't be so.
I have a number in my head, Rick.
No, I didn't, I don't, it's, it's not. I didn't expect you to have one, but I'm just saying, you know, you, were you guys aware that that's going on?
Yeah, we're heating the pool?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been heated for quite a few years.
Yeah, I heard that.
They also have a cover on it to heat, keep the heat in.
Still cost to even.
And. Go into it.
So at this point, is there any other commissioners, do you have any thoughts, input?
Did I, did I see a number right up on the, on the recycling, on, on the garbage, that there's a negative number there?
Yes, that is correct.
And how does that happen when you have, uh, maybe Dave can clarify that, cause obviously you, you had a bid, correct?
Yep.
And you adjusted your rates accordingly? What's happening that we're, or is that just money that hasn't come in yet, or?
The difference is, is the fuel. In the contract, there's a fuel surcharge.
Okay.
And that's, it's been that way all the time, fuel.
Thank you.
Julie, when is our, or Levi, when is our garbage contract come up now again? I have to find that out, I haven't.
I'm not sure. It's been a few years.
It's been at least two, two, maybe three. So, these are the recommendations, whether or not you guys, uh, this is what I would recommend that we start doing as of today. No new projects at this time until we get this completed. All spending unless it is for current projects that have already been approved or for maintenance or emergencies. Would need prior approval from the commissioner with that portfolio. And if it is anything different than that, such as an emergency or utility cutoff, just notify that person with, that commissioner within twenty-four hours.
Daily operations would stay.
Daily operations, any of those would, would be the same. Yep. Move to increase our water and utility. Two dollars and fifty cents each. So water and sewer to cover the USDA loan. So a full, total five dollars per per hookup. And then after we get these things more under control, we can figure out where we're going at from there. But that'd be my recommendations for you guys for approval.
So you have the two fifty, and what was the other one, I guess I kinda been.
Two fifty for water, two fifty for sewer.
Okay.
So a total of five dollars. To go into effect in December bill. Yep, on the base rate.
Is this the USDA in, USDA interim funds loan you're talking about, or?
No, that would be the USDA interim funds, as we spend out of that to pay for the first portion of it. And then after that, USDA reimburses us back, but anything. So I think the loan amount, the, the first part is a grant and then after that is a loan, whatever we use after that fact.
So that's the five hundred and eighty-five thousand?
I believe the five eighty-five is the grant and then anything above that is.
Is the loan?
Does that sound right, Julie?
I think so.
So we had to pay for the grant part first and then USDA reimburses that back.
Are we reimbursed back for that already?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Cause we haven't paid any bills for the.
And that comes in a separate account too, it'll come into the bank and, so, we have that separate account for it.
But when we pay the bills, or pay that, that loan payment once a year, it'll go into that, uh, which number is it? Be for, account four fifty-six. And then we would transfer money in from our sewer and water accounts to pay off that loan.
And so the raising of each that sewer and water would, did you, do you know how long it would take to pay that off then?
I think that loan is for it's either thirty or forty years is what.
So this one says forty year long, so.
So that's what it, so forty years.
So that increase would help to pay that off over the forty years?
Yes. Yep, that was the recommendation for me, A two S was to, to pay those off.
So you need, uh.
If that's what you guys would like to. If that's what you guys would like to do, like, we have to have two motions, one for the rate increase and then one for the, the rest of the.
I'll make a motion on.
Our re, our resolution for the rate increase.
I agree on the resolution.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a motion to pass a resolution to increase water, two dollars and fifty cents, sewer two dollars and fifty cents. Starting in December twenty twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dave. Is there any other discussion? Any other input from the public? Yes, ma'am.
I haven't been here before, but can I bring up three things at one time? I mean, some of it you went over, in a sense, you're talking about the railroad park over here.
For, at this point, just stay on the water, but.
You can bring that up later.
You can bring it up later, but at this point, just.
No, I have no issues but water, except what happened at my house, three and a half weeks ago. There's a water issue there. You came out to my house and back in the museum, Nostids came, Hams was there. You put in a new, um.
Moved a fire hydrant.
A fire hydrant. You put in a new one?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it was fine in the morning, Monday morning. My sister had water. And I talked to Hams. He said, we should be done by, you know, later, five, six o'clock, flush out everything. My sister had no water that night. Toilet didn't work. The next day, things weren't working. So I think I caught Hams on Wednesday or Thursday. Or maybe he came Tuesday, drove by and I said, things are not working here. And he said, well, let the water run. We let the water run and just a little drip came out of the kitchen. My sister had, it turned out the shower water was clear and clean. And the water outside spigot or pipe was fine. Kitchen couldn't get anything, toilet wouldn't flush. And the little sink in the, in little bathroom, that, that has been a problem. That wasn't an issue with this. We didn't have much coming out of that. So here we go. They cover everything up. I call up again. I think I called up here, but anyway, it turns out we had to get a plumber. Nothing would run. The water wouldn't come out of the kitchen sink. Then one day, my sister turned on the hot water faucet and it came out, clear and decent. So she did a few dishes. She touched the coal and it stopped like that. Now, the water coming out was of course hot out of the heater downstairs. So for three and a half weeks now, until I got a plumber, because you can't get plumbers, they're so busy. My sister has had no water except out of the shower to take and put in the tank to flush it, the toilet tank. We got a plumber, Ness out of Mayville. He found dirt in the toilet tank. He found, he was monkeying with the knob on the back of the toilet, opened it up. All this mud came on the floor. Now, we had no issues until that Monday morning and our pipes are okay, he said, as far as they're galvanized. They're not copper. Uh there's nothing red coming out. So I want the city to pay for my plumber because I don't know how you do the hydrants and how they dig and how they watch the pipes. I'm not a plumber, but all that dirt should have not gotten in there. I'm the only one plugged over there. And I want the city to pay the bill to whatever Ness gives me on this. Because nobody would want, none of you would want to go three and a half weeks without much water. And, and I'm upset about it, cause I just don't think, they aren't gonna dig it up, okay. But why wasn't things taken? How, what went in there and how plugged was it? What?
So I will say, we'll come back to you, but your issue is separate from what we're working on right now.
Okay, well, when you mentioned water, so I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not used to being at these meetings and that, but.
No worries. We'll come back at the end of the meeting and I won't forget about you. Is there any other discussion on the motion for the resolution? Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Our next item would, our next motion, if you want us to approve, would be for the, um, the other items that I had mentioned. Did you want me to go over those again?
Yes, please.
Give me one sec. Uh, no new projects at this time to be completed, only finish up our current projects. Starting. All spending over, or all spending that needs prior approval for any projects or anything. That happens. The only exception to that is if it's for a emergency that would cause a utility cutoff or to consumer. But then to make sure we notify that commissioner with that portfolio within twenty-four hours after we have that expense, so that they're aware of it. I think that was the only two things that were on that.
I'll make the motion.
Dave makes the motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Julia, you think your office can handle that? That, those two things? Just make sure that you're able to handle it.
For the next two weeks.
Well, Ashley's not here, so I can't ask her. So I have to ask you. You can say yes for her. Jim, are you okay with that?
I don't.
Is there any other discussion? All right. Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave? Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? All right, so that'll be our first start. Like I said, I will work with all of you and Ashley. And Julian will try to get this more under control and get you guys the other changes that we may need to work out. And to the public, I hope that you guys can be patient with us, cause this is gonna be a, a long tedious process to try to get us back on the straight and narrow. And if you have concerns, please reach out to us and let us know. But I don't think we even have a full grasp of everything that's going on right now, even at this point. All right. Any other things on our fiscal responsibility that we need to talk about tonight that you all? Okay. Next item of business would be under new business. Those will, dollars for scholars raffle permit. I have a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move by D, Dave, seconded by Mike. Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Last item of new business is. I'll let Paul talk about it more, but he have, the Missouri River has a program for fifth graders to learn about electricity. Devarian. There we go. Do you have anything? Paul?
Uh, everybody had this in their packet. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to read it, but what is, is it a program that MRES puts together for fifth graders in our, in our public school here? It's a, it's a fifty-fifty cost share. MRES takes care of half the cost and the city takes care of half of it. As you can see there, the total estimated cost is forty-four dollars per student or twenty dollars for each student is the cost of the city. Uh, there's no cost to the school or anything like that. It's all paid through. Here, I did reach out to the, the principal at the elementary school, uh sent him, shared the information with him. He researched it and came back and said that they would be interested in doing this program. They thought it would be very beneficial. Probably would be looking at doing it sometime towards the spring. So there's a process of getting them all the information that they need. Uh, I'm asking from you is if you would approve the twenty dollar, twenty-two dollars for each student. And I think there is a ten dollar charge in there for some, something else. I can't remember what it was. Uh, it's a one-time fee for some, some bill, but they need, they, they put our city logo and everything is on, on the, on the information. It's quite an elaborate, they do quite a bit of stuff. It does a good job of promoting the Bright Energy Solutions and also the city. And it's, it's just a real good program that we, it, it's a, just kinda uh educates the fifth grade on, on all the different things dealing with, with, uh, with electrical going forward. I think all of you probably have read it, so. Uh, I'll just leave it at that. It would be, I think it, they're estimating forty-three students right now. So it'd be able to cost the city about nine hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, somewhere in that area. So what I'm asking is for a motion to approve, uh, us going forward with this program. And it might change if there's less students, might change if there's more, but it would be that twenty-two dollars for each student. And I'm looking for a motion to approve this so that I can get ahold of the people, the contacts at MRES to move forward this, forward with this. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Paul? Paul, are you making the motion?
I'll make the motion, yes, to move ahead and do, and, and do this, so.
It's moved by Paul. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Paul.
Seconded by Dave. Is there any other discussion? Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me?
Motion carries.
Actually, he's aware of all this too, so she's been on all the emails, so she knows about it and so.
Is it Bonnie?
Bonnie, yes.
Bonnie, you're up.
Okay.
So.
I listened to that. I'm pretty sure that's.
I'd like, um, evidently there was some issues with, um, water at Bonnie Matthews' house due to work done on the water line in front of her house. And I would make a recommendation that we cover the cost of any plumbing issues in her house, which I'm sure were caused by that.
Have you got them all taken care of now?
Pardon?
Have they all been taken care of?
No, uh, well, I have them coming back to do a sink, but that's my issue, putting a sink. So it's just the plumbing. The young man has been there and I haven't gotten a bill from his boss, Ralph or somebody yet. So I don't have the bill, but I wanted to come up and state my thing. So as soon as I get it, I'll bring it up to.
It's unfortunate it happened. It does happen.
You're right.
And we apologize, but um.
I, I know those things can happen, but.
We've covered.
You remember the time the sewer line came down and plugged right there?
Yeah.
And I had troubles and I had to pay all that myself because it, it turns, it doesn't go straight. But I just felt that this, as my sister said, it was fine in the morning and that was it. And that is kinda.
That would be my recommendation.
Um, I don't even think that we need a motion for that, cause that's kinda common practice that we cover those type of costs.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I know there was another one.
I wish you would've came to me before this. I didn't realize.
Oh, well.
That's okay.
First, hard to get the plumber. I was waiting. Next time I'll come to you. But I thought, I will, I'm sorry. I don't know always who to go to, but.
And moving forward on all these things, you know, I know there was a little concern on another spot with, with water. It's important that our citizens know that, you know, there's some things that are beyond our control. It's just part of the process. And we sure encourage you to be in contact with, with Jim or the city, at least City Hall and let us know, because we can't really do anything if we don't know what's exactly going on, so.
And there was nothing to do until I got a plumber and, and, and stuff, but now that I have, I, I would appreciate it being paid for. Am I able to bring something else up?
You sure can.
Okay. You're talking about the railroad. Now, out at the cemetery, this one bothers me a lot. Maybe you've had others complain. When you're going off eighty-one to the city cemetery, that road is starting to get more narrow and narrow. And somebody, there's no lights out there. Is it because we can't, we fill in that deep ditch? Cause if somebody goes off, that's a fall. Is it the railroad that you're having issues with, the property ownership? Or why can't we fix? You, you've all been out there. I'm sure you've seen it. Something has to be done or somebody's gonna get hurt there. And it's, you know, you, the hearse is going, people are driving, they even go under over to that, you know, under interstate. But I don't know if it's Hillsborough and the railroad or who.
State, state, start, we start with the state, railroad, township.
It's the state highway department. It's, there's your jurisdiction, their, their area, their right of way.
Okay.
And there can't, you can't do anything without their approval.
Can somebody make a move to, right to Bismarck or wherever and say, we've got two dangerous spots here? Do something before somebody goes off and is killed. You know, I mean, you've seen it. It just, that road doesn't seem to, you know, there's a lot of stuff you could, even if you pile a bunch of cement pieces and then smooth it over with dirt or something, at least when you go off, you're not gonna go down. I just think it's a dangerous point and somebody needs to address it before you have a lawsuit because somebody's gone off and gotten hurt or killed. It seems simple to me, but I mean, I knew you had, there was railroad issues there. But I would think that, that somebody should do something. And the third thing, you talk about keeping Hillsborough nice and I agree. You got, you come down by the armory, you're going south to go past, you know, Marlene Deals on that road. And there is a sign there that says Hillsborough, correct? Unless it's come down. Right on the left-hand corner, like, you know what I'm talking about, turning. Okay. There is no lights there. That road is kinda hard to see. And, and if we have a sign, we have a sign for interstate, why can't we have a little light over the sign that says Hillsborough? So if people are coming that way, they know what they're entering to.
We actually put a, you know, we put into the state highway department to put a street, a light on that corner, but we never, ever did hear anything from them.
Well, then.
But we sure look into that.
I mean, I just think it's nice to see Hillsborough and also again, dangerous, you know, cause there are no lights there. And we know there is a turn there, but I just thought, if you got a sign, why not put up a light that says, you know, Hillsborough, North Dakota?
Yep.
And then another thing, please check the city lights. I drive around at night sometimes and sometimes you've got three, four blocks of no lights. Isn't there somebody that once in a while can go around and get them? Cause sometimes it goes, some nights quite a, a bit and it's dark in those areas. I'm sorry bringing up all this, but it's things I've just never been here before and it's things I see.
Nope, that is perfectly fine and we, we encourage, if anybody has issues or concerns to come up to the commission meeting or to reach out to any one of us, or, you know, if you have issues with water. Or, you know, if you have issues with water or sewer, any of those things that you haven't issues for that long. Reach out to Jim or reach out to Ashley or Julie or Sarah in the office.
She did call and, and we told her to keep running water. That's what.
Well, they said maybe they could pay for the water deducted, but there was no water coming out. You know, my sister wasn't showering every day and it was all going because of that. So I do appreciate this, I really do.
Bonnie.
And I know things can happen.
As far as the streetlights go, we, we encourage citizens to let us know, because I'm abated when it gets dark, so, um.
Can you hire me? I'll drive around in the midnight, write down.
We rely, it's easier in the wintertime when it gets dark quicker, but we do rely on citizens to, to let us know when lights are, are working.
And I know you're, you know, short of help and maybe money, but I called Julie before and said, my light's out over by the museum, cause.
And I just send it to them and.
So.
We ignore it.
Yeah.
But I thank you very much, and like I said, I'm sorry, it's first time here, but, um, I appreciate that. So thank you very much. As soon as I get the bill, I'll bring it to you then, Julie. Okay, great.
Anybody else have, here to address the commission? Anybody else? I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Dave moves, is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye, meeting is adjourned.